Good evening, I'd like to call, welcome you all here and call the city council meeting to order December 8, 2009. First of all, thank the San Bruno Garden Club for providing the floral arrangements at all of our meetings. Roll call, please. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
And on her birthday, Carol, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday Carol.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the right of our liberty, of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, we have some announcements. There will not be a city council meeting on the 4th Tuesday in December. This is the last one, except for a special one next week when we talk about appointment to, of a new council member. San Bruno's redevelopment agency will meet following this evening's meeting. And presentations, we have none this evening. Review of the agenda, if there's no objections, I'd like to pull item number 11, which is the Personnel Board report and have them report after item number eight. Approval of the minutes, regular council meeting of November 24th and special council meeting of December 1st. Any additions, changes?
Mayor Ruane?
Yes.
On the minutes from December 1st, on the second page, there's an addition to the minute that should reflect that Vice Mayor Medina asks for the notices for the council vacancy be forwarded to the boards and the commissions. So I've added that, but I'd also like to say that that's, that's the job of the city clerk. That would be the first thing we would do upon your announcement. So, I've made such a change in the minutes.
Okay. Would that change? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as changed?
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent calendar on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening. Let's move right to item 11, which is the annual report of the Personnel Board.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and council members. Tonight, the Personnel Board is here to present our annual report. The first thing we'd like to do is congratulate the council on the recent election results. It's very encouraging to see the council staying together and moving forward. Tonight, we have four members of the Personnel Board that are here. We also have a vacancy. Vice Chair Ed Fuentes, Anna Marie Jones, and Ed Comfort. The Personnel Board has a variety of activities that we carry out throughout the year. We look at job descriptions. We do comprehensive review of the job descriptions before they go out for recruitment. During the past year, we worked on job descriptions in the Community Services Department, which is the library, parks, and recreation, and also the senior center. That was one of the focuses this past year. The Police Department, the Fire Department, and all the categories in those departments. And that resulted in the revision of 27 different job descriptions within the areas that we look at. And we've also completed review of two new job descriptions that's gone out. Proctor, two written exams, and we provide a quarterly report to the council. And the council also attends most of our meetings, a member of the council. Another thing, for future goals and objectives, we plan to continue reviewing the status of recruitments and targeting areas to increase our recruitments, evaluate the process afterwards of the recruitment to make sure that we've touched all of the areas that we need to and have a very good pool of candidates. And we'll continue to conduct proctors for exams as required and when necessary. And throughout the year, any of you are obviously more than welcome at our meetings. I know we have a council representative, but whenever you have questions or concerns, we're there to support you at all times. So if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Through the Chair. I know it's been a long time since we had the concern about the process, the lingering process of going through interviews and such, and that we were quite possibly losing good candidates because of how long it was before we made a decision. Do you feel that you're at your optimum process right now, getting the best candidates and being able to review the process, getting them through interview processes?
Each active recruitment, we look at the areas that we target and try to determine where the applications come from. And then, the timetable is when it's, when it's left the recruitment process for the Personnel Board, that goes to the Human Resources Department and they set up the interviews and follow-up. But, that first, that first application, when they come back, that's when we try to determine how successful the advertising has been and how, how success, by looking at the pool, you can tell how successful you've been in reaching out into different markets. Thank you.
Through the Chair. You've already mentioned in your report, but I just wanted to reiterate that I believe personally, and I think the Board does, that the review of the recruitment process is extremely important. To have it reviewed, not only once the process is complete, to ensure that everything is fair, accurate, and it's getting out to the right folks. And I think it is important that the Board continue in that endeavor and try to come up with an area of satisfaction that helps the city as well as meets the Board's expectations of what their function is in this role.
Thank you. Irene?
Thank you very much. We look forward to another good year.
I didn't have, I didn't have a question, but I did want to make a comment. And I know that sometimes the road through what the Personnel Board has done and changed in the last few years have been a little rocky, but it seems that you're on a smooth path right now and you've done a lot of things. And I know it can be a very tedious process. I know some of you are like, "Yeah, it's gonna be." But it's very crucial, and I appreciate all the efforts that all of you have done. So, thank you very much.
Drew Walsh, so Dave, I would like to say that, and I've attended a couple of these meetings, it's been quite a while, but it's very, very time-consuming and requires a lot of dedication, and we want to let you know how much we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is item number nine, a public comment on items not on the agenda. Individuals allow three minutes, groups in attendance, five minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and to action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Anyone would like to address the council? All right. Seeing no one, conduct of business. Item number 10A, adopt a resolution approving new time-limited parking restriction in the 400 block of Third Avenue, limiting parking duration to 15 minutes weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Staff report, please.
So, I'm before you tonight to recommend adoption of new time-limited parking restrictions on Third Avenue adjacent to Bel Air School. As the council is aware, we've been working over a fairly long period of time, really trying to address neighborhood traffic issues in the Bel Air neighborhood. An important part of that was working in and around Bel Air School and trying to improve the circulation there. In addition, we've adopted several other initiatives, including speed hump in the 500 block of Third Avenue, rerouting the access points to the pickup and drop-off area from Third Avenue to First Avenue. And those have been effective. And as we implemented those things, the school has observed, and they came to us with one additional request. As you can see up on the screen, we have parking in, sort of in the median in Third Avenue, and that is the only parking that has no time restriction. And what the observation was from the school is, there was regularly long-term parkers in that zone, and it really conflicted with the need to have quick turnover during the busy pickup periods and drop-off periods in the morning and the afternoon. The school came to us, we worked with them, created a proposal, and then went to the TSBC. This is close to the neighborhood, and so we worked closely with the neighborhood, and we conducted two hearings with the TSBC in October and November. We provided written notices to the October meeting, and also written notices to the November meeting, and that notice was in both English and Spanish. So we did a major effort to really outreach, to inform the community and let them know what was being proposed. We actually found that there was, we had no citizens that came in. We had some contact with folks, they had some questions, and we explained, but there appears to be support for the proposal. The TSBC then recommended that the council adopt staff's recommendation, which is to adapt, to impose a 15-minute parking restriction in the morning and in the afternoon on weekdays to facilitate the drop-off and pickup at the school. We've collaborated with the principal at Bel Air, they support this proposal, and I'm ready to answer any questions if you have any regarding this.
Any questions to staff?
I have them.
Irene?
Are you going to put some notification that this only applies during school hours, or is it, is it your intention to have it for the year long?
Well, when we debated that, and really for simplicity of understanding the notice, the notice intent is year-round, during morning and afternoon. Really, we don't believe that there's, the majority of the demand for parking here really is related to the school. There is other parking in the neighborhood and in the parking lot that is adjacent to Bel Air School that is longer duration. So yes, we're proposing a shorter duration here, effective for the entire year.
Okay. I was just wondering, during summer, when they have games in the fields, do they, I don't know, do they use that, or they just use the parking on the side? Okay. Never mind that.
Through the Chair, so, what did they find to be, who would they violate? Who were the long-term parkers in that area that prompted this?
Well, there is some spillover parking from the neighborhood. And really, as school is about to start, we actually actively work with the school, with police. We go in there and we do some advance reminder notices to try and move people that have been long-term parking. So, we're managing in a way so that today, we're not seeing long-term parking in this zone. But, if attention isn't placed on trying to get parking to turn over there, this happens to be a location where we have long-term parking. And, of course, this is a public street.
And the school during, during the drop-off and the pickup times, I mean, they're out there monitoring the traffic and making sure that the flow, you know?
Right. So the school actively has a presence. They have proctors out there directing traffic, so they're actively managing the quick turnover.
Through the Chair. And obviously, you already made it clear that the principal and the faculty and staff over at Bel Air were in favor of this proposal, and requested part of it. And also, they'll be educating their parents and staff in regards to this?
Exactly. They've been very helpful in sending notices home or providing notices to the students and the parents to really gain everyone's understanding of what we're trying to do here.
And I would assume if it passes and it begins, that patrols, law enforcement would be reasonable as far as trying to get everybody informed with a timeframe?
Exactly. What we're, we're actually, as far as the implementation, we should within two weeks be able to fabricate the signs and put them in place. And we typically do work with law enforcement so that we have a transition period so that everyone is aware and there's not an immediate penalty imposed.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item B, adopt a resolution approving an increase in construction budget and appropriating $50,000 from the redevelopment fund to the El Camino Real Phase 1 medians and pedestrian improvement project.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, I was before you two meetings ago, giving you a more detailed presentation on the status of the El Camino median project. During that presentation, I informed you that the department is in negotiation with the contractor on our hopefully last, and certainly the last, change order on this project. And I communicated to you that I will be back and asking the increase of the budget, the construction budget for this project. And that's the intent tonight. The final, I just, you have, just to remind you exactly the scope of the project, this last change order in essence includes necessary work on median four, additional excavation work and replacement of that excavated material with planting soil. The final cost for that additional work which needs to be done is $49,000. And this will increase the overall contract to $84,000. It is our assumption and estimate this time that this will be the final cost for this project.
Any questions to staff?
And what I am asking your approval to increase the construction budget using redevelopment funding for that additional increase.
Any questions to staff?
Through the Chair. I'd just like to make, make a statement that it is really looking good, you know, today. And that I know that we've always anticipated that there were some unknowns. And my question is, are we fully documenting what we're doing so that we know in the future what, you know, what changes we've made and what to expect, you know, for future generations that will change the meetings?
Absolutely. For phase two, our learning process will be used for phase one, will be used for phase two, and it is our intent, and is already done, the soil investigation before this contract document will go out. And I might say also, not to defend by any means the department, it's not my place to defend our department, but our engineering estimate was higher originally, and this final number bring closer to the engineering estimate. But, the city received a reasonably good bid proposal, and the bid proposal came in below the engineering estimate originally.
Any other questions to staff? Action by the council?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item C, receive a report and update regarding the California Department of Housing and Community Development's review of the draft housing element.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. The purpose of this item is to report on an update of the housing element of the city's, update of the housing element. The City Council held a study session in August to review the housing element and provided comments, which staff incorporated into the document and submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The state conducted its 60-day review of the housing element and reported their findings to the city in a letter in mid-November. Most of HCD's comments are relatively minor, requiring clarification and additional explanation and analysis. And staff is preparing a memorandum to respond to the state's comments. However, the state did have one significant concern regarding the housing element program that addresses the requirement to plan for homeless housing in the city. The state is concerned that the 10-bed size limit in the program does not provide a realistic opportunity for development of emergency shelters. The requirement is based on SB 2, a law that was adopted in the, in the last year for this housing element cycle, and it requires cities to identify a zone or zones where homeless shelters are allowed as a permitted use without a conditional use permit to permit, to ensure that zoning encourages and facilitates homeless shelters. San Bruno has an identified need for 32 homeless shelter beds, based on the county homeless census and survey, which was conducted in January of 2009. SB 2 does allow flexibility for local governments to apply written objective development and management standards for homeless shelters, including the maximum number of beds or persons permitted to be served nightly. However, neither the legislation nor HCD state what that maximum size is, and what would be appropriate for the community. The City Council discussed this issue extensively at the, at the study session, and recognizing the importance of this issue, and the, the council designated the new transit-oriented development area as a zone where homeless shelters are permitted in San Bruno, and also endorsed the idea of a 10-bed limit. The council recognized the need to balance several interests, including the city's willingness to do its part to meet the critical needs of the homeless population and the state requirements, but the city also has to consider the impact on the community. Staff is recommending revising Program 6D, which addresses the homeless housing in the city, to remove the limit on the number of shelter beds, and to state that the city will develop written objective standards for homeless shelters using specific language from SB 2. In addition, the housing element would state that the city will coordinate with homeless service providers, such as the Interfaith Hospitality Network and the Peninsula Clergy Network, as well as the 21 Elements Countywide Consortium of Cities that are working on housing elements as a group, to determine appropriate standards for emergency shelters in San Bruno, and to draft language to include in the zoning code update. Staff will submit its response to HCD's comments within the next week, and then we'll discuss, we'll have a phone conference with the HCD reviewers to discuss the proposed revisions. And once HCD endorses the revision, staff will bring the final housing element to the City Council for approval. And with that, I'd be interested in taking any direction from the City Council.
Through the Chair. Couple of things. One, I know the state on the SB 2, they had said that obviously 10, they say, is not feasible.
Correct.
Even though we do have currently an existing
Right.
10-bed facility within our community. So it can work. And it's sometimes, often, that I think the state says what it, what it won't allow, but doesn't offer any solutions or alternatives or suggestions to us. That's my first observation. But the second is, on the 10 that are currently in St. Bruno's, does that help us with our 32 count that's required?
No, it doesn't. The, the homeless count was actually, there were 55 total homeless, and 32 of those were unsheltered. So the others, the others are sheltered, and that includes the 10 beds in the San Bruno, at the San Bruno Catholic Church.
Questions, comments?
First of all, on the very first line, they keep referring to them as emergence, emergency shelters.
Yeah.
Do we have to use that language? It's very misleading.
No, I, I agree with you. I think that, I think we should more consistently use homeless shelters.
Great, okay.
Because that really is the intent, yes.
So, so our basic decisions, we've already talked about it being transit-oriented development area, so we've already agreed to do that. And then, I think the rest of the things that you're going to be looking at, that's, I can't think of anything to add to what you've done, so.
Okay.
Go for it.
Anything else? Do you have your direction, Mark?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
We do.
Thank you for the report. We already did item 11. Number 12, comments from council members?
Oh, I did.
Councilwoman O'Connell.
Thank you very much. Beautification Task Force will be doing their holiday lights program this year. That's where the members go out and photograph the different holiday lights throughout the city, and then we do a PowerPoint presentation, and it is broadcast on our Channel 1 during Christmas weekend. This year, we'd like to add an element. Sometimes our pictures, they're all amateurs that go out and do this, and sometimes our pictures are not the best, but we would like to include people's own pictures, if you would like to. We also would like to include your Christmas tree that's inside, if you would like to submit that, and with your family around it, if you'd like to do that. So if you have Christmas holiday, or holiday, I shouldn't say Christmas, holiday light, so our Christmas trees, or any kind of thing like that, that you would like to see broadcast on our Channel 1, please put it either on a disc and give it to the city clerk, and she'll get it to me. Or go to our website, to my email address, and you can attach it and send it to me. The deadline is December 18th, because we need a little time to put the program together and then broadcast it. And I'm sure, we're as a cable person, we can put an announcement on cable. Thanks. Thank you.
We don't want to see the tree in Union Square, New York. We want to see stuff.
No, ours, ours. This is for San Bruno. Thank you.
Councilmember Ibera.
Mr. Mayor, on a sad note, I'd like to propose that we adjourn this meeting in memory of longtime resident Louis Grusell, who died last, in the last couple of weeks. He was very active in Bel Air School, in the community, in Cappuccino High School, and he was actually a good friend of mine and helped in one of my campaigns way back when. Wish the family well in this time and in his memory. Thank you.
Good. We will adjourn this meeting in his memory. And seeing no other business, the regular city council meeting, we will adjourn this meeting to the redevelopment agency. And I'd like to ask for roll call, please.
Agency member O'Connell.
Here.
Agency member Ibera.
Here.
Vice Chair Medina.
Here.
Chair Ruane.
Here. Approval of the minutes, regular meeting of October 27th. You have them up here. Any changes, additions? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. Consent calendar, we have nothing on the consent calendar. Public hearing, no public hearing tonight. Public comment, once again, Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the agency? Conduct of business, item number six, oral presentation and consultant kickoff meeting for redevelopment five-year implementation plan.
Through the Chair. Before we begin, I just want to get clarification from the city attorney, since we will be discussing and going over elements of the transit corridor. And prior, I've had to recuse myself, and so has another member, and whether or not we are necessary to do that this time, or whether, since there's no action or decision-making, that we're permitted to remain.
And I'd like to piggyback on that as well.
I was doing it for both of us.
As I understand it, two council members have property interests in the redevelopment area. And if city council members have property interests in the redevelopment area, there generally is a conflict of interest for the purposes of broad policy decisions like implementation of a, excuse me, like the adoption of the five-year implementation program for the RDA. And the reason for that is that the decision affects all of the properties in the RDA, and therefore, by implication, any individual properties that council members may hold. However, tonight, that is not what you have before you. You're not being asked to adopt the implementation program, and you're not being asked to make any decisions about it. What is before you is an informational item, in which the statutory requirements are going to be explained, and the process that the city is undertaking with respect to this implementation plan. Therefore, I find that there is no conflict of interest on the matter before you this evening, because it is an informational item. With a note of caution that, should the discussion devolve into, which I don't anticipate to happen, any
devolve into, which I don't anticipate to happen, any setting of specific priorities or financial priorities, then you would start to get into an area that would create that type of difficulty for you. So do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions of our attorney?
I think she's just telling us to stay seated.
Correct.
Bluntly.
Thank you.
Honorable Chair, members of the redevelopment agency?
The agency is completing its tenth year of operation. It was formed in nineteen ninety-nine, and it's also completing its second five-year implementation plan. As you know, implementation plans have to be prepared every five years, and we are now starting on our third implementation plan. The agency has achieved a number of significant accomplishments in the last ten years, such as planning for and facilitating development at the crossing, the former Navy site, which includes over two hundred units of affordable housing, and over a thousand units of housing It has funded the construction of the police facility and improvements in the downtown, as well as the commercial facade improvement program. The agency is entering into a new phase, as the crossing development nears completion, and the downtown and transit corridor plan is in progress. The transit corridors plan will provide an important roadmap to help to direct redevelopment activities in the future. The agency has engaged RSG Consulting to assist with preparing this third implementation plan, because it is a very important one. RSG has provided redevelopment consulting services for nearly thirty years, and has prepared over one hundred implementation plans and midterm reviews. We have Kathy Rosenau, a principal at RSG, and Suzie Kim, who's the project manager on the implementation plan here. And Kathy will give the presentation on the upcoming five-year implementation plan.
Excuse us as we try to find our presentation. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. What we intend to do tonight is to provide a general background on redevelopment, as well as introduce some of the things that are underway with regards to the preparation of this next five-year implementation plan. To begin with, the San Bruno redevelopment project area, as Mark indicated, was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. It includes approximately seven hundred acres, largely centered around the downtown area. As Mark indicated, redevelopment law requires that a five-year implementation plan, oh, a five-year implementation plan be completed. And in order to keep with that schedule, the intent is to bring the plan back to you in January for actual approval. So tonight, we just wanted to introduce some of the initial concepts. The implementation plan is an opportunity to start prioritizing projects and programs for the next five years, based upon the agency's and the city's needs and goals. One of the important things, because of all the work that's been underway on the downtown and transit corridor specific plan, will be blending some of the activities to implement potentially that plan with the redevelopment implementation. It's important to point out that an implementation plan under redevelopment law can be amended at any time, so if a year or two or five years from now, there's a desire to make a change, it is within the agency's authority to do such. Redevelopment law requires that every redevelopment plan contains certain limits, and in addition, back when your plan was adopted, some limits were negotiated as part of your agreement with the county. These limits include, first, the plan duration, which is July six, twenty thirty. What that means is that's the time limit for commencing implementation activities, and when you do, any kind of agreement that puts on a control for land use, the duration of that control should comply with that duration. The second limit is the limit on the receipt of tax increment and the repayment of debt. That gives you another ten years, so July six, twenty forty, to collect tax increment. The third is on incurring debt. Basically, the law says that you have twenty years to incur debt, so that would take you to July six, twenty nineteen. That particular limit can be amended by going through a redevelopment plan amendment process. Next, eminent domain, there's a limit, initially a twelve years, so your eminent domain limit is currently July six, twenty eleven. Again, that amendment could be amended through a process. Next, the tax increment limit of five hundred and fifty million. This was one of those limits that wasn't required by law, but was the outcome of your negotiations with the county. If you were to want to amend that limit, it would likely be required to return and potentially renegotiate that agreement. The last is another limit required by law, and that's your bonded indebtedness limit of two hundred million dollars. You're well beneath that limit today. Overall, the purpose of redevelopment under California state law is to improve communities through the rebuilding and repair of infrastructure. Many of the projects that you've accomplished to date have certainly involved that. Revitalization of neighborhoods, there are a number of neighborhoods included within the project area boundaries. Producing affordable housing, which you've already undertaken and continue to do. Stimulating growth in commercial areas, including jobs creation, which obviously projects like the crossing, and which you're contemplating potentially in the specific plan transit corridor, would be such kinds of projects. Typically, redevelopment is most successful when it's a public-private partnership, when you have private interest investing back into new development within the community. How is redevelopment financed? Primarily through use of tax increment, which we'll talk about in a moment, but also redevelopment can be financed through grants from other entities, loans, bonds, developer advances, many sources of legal revenue to help facilitate redevelopment. Tax increment is actually a redirection of a portion of the tax that's generated from growth of property values, and that new growth, new property tax growth, goes to the redevelopment agency. It's important to point out that the redevelopment agency has no authority to increase taxes, either property taxes or any other kind of tax. It's a redirection of new property tax. By way of example, you can see in this slide what happens when you create the project area. It's called the base year tax revenue. All of that revenue continues to go to all of the affected taxing entities, and then as new private investment occurs and property values increase, the property tax that's generated by those new values is what goes to the redevelopment agency. Now, when the redevelopment agency receives tax increment, the law requires that twenty percent be set aside for the purposes of increasing and enhancing affordable housing. The law also requires that a portion be passed through to all of those affected taxing entities, and then what remains is left for the agency to spend on non-affordable housing projects. How that works out is twenty percent generally is in the low mod fund. Over time, approximately thirty cents goes back to the affected taxing entities, leaving approximately fifty percent for the non-housing projects. Mark has gone through some of those accomplishments of the redevelopment agency since its inception, so I won't spend more time going through those. You can see those on this slide, as well as the next slide. Moving into the legal requirements for the five-year implementation plan, again, it has to be adopted every five years. You're also required to do a midterm review of that. That's an opportunity that many agencies use if they want to update their plan at that time. It's a good opportunity to do that, because you have to hold the hearing, just as you will in January. The law requires that the plan identify the goals of the project area, and the proposed projects and programs that will be implemented, and an estimate of expenditures of tax increment over the next five years. It also requires that the plan describe how those projects will address existing blighting conditions. Part of the reason for forming a project area was to eliminate conditions that the redevelopment law refers to as blight. Another element is to assure that the redevelopment affordable housing requirements are implemented. There's certain mandates in law with regards to production of affordable housing. As you know, the city has been processing a downtown and transit corridor specific plan, which will focus on a new development plan through the year twenty thirty. The purpose of this specific plan is to foster new residential, office, retail, and hotel development, and another major focus is to enhance the transportation infrastructure, particularly related to public transit, bicycle pedestrian, and also automobile transit. Now, the specific plan area conveniently overlaps well with the San Bernardino, or the San, excuse me, San Bruno, you can tell where I've been, project area, and its implementation will effectuate the redevelopment of key corridors within the San Bruno redevelopment plan. And so from that perspective, it's important that the implementation plan consider and include some of the implementation activities associated with the specific plan. For example, the specific plan as it exists today identifies a number of opportunity sites for potential new development, specifically along the San Bruno, Al Camino, and San Mateo An example of one of those would be the potential reuse of this closed building at one-eleven San Bruno Avenue, with a potential new development showing ground floor retail with residential above the retail. Now, redevelopment provides special tools to help implement those kinds of projects. One of those tools is owner participation. There's a mandate in law that owners, existing property owners and businesses, be given a priority to be involved in redevelopment, and to enter, potentially enter into contracts with the agency to accomplish redevelopment. The agency also has the authority to acquire property for the purpose of land assemblage, so that if there are numerous small lots that no longer make sense in today's economy and real estate marketplace, those can be consolidated and assembled for potential new development. Also, funding public infrastructure and facilities is an important tool redevelopment agencies have. The reality is, in most cases, implementation of those kind of projects require a combination of all of those forms of tools. Successful redevelopment will likely result from focusing on opportunity sites, and opportunity sites are particularly those where there are willing landowners or participants, where the market is ready, where the real estate market has reached a point where it can accommodate that kind of development, where the development is financially viable, and the financing is available to invest in it, and where there's a willing developer who is willing to invest in that property. Now, the details of how the implementation of the specific plan are to occur are still in an infancy stage. And so as we focus now back on the five-year implementation plan, one of the items that we're suggesting is that the plan focus on more broad programs at this juncture, with the idea being that, over time, the programs could be more specifically developed, and at this point, what we intend to do is introduce four primary programs, and then give examples of specific projects that could be implemented under those. So the first of that, of those would be implementation of the specific plan, and particularly the potential for the opportunity sites, and the infrastructure improvements that the specific plan has already identified as needed. A second major category to be included in the implementation plan would be the infrastructure improvements, including accessible pedestrian ramps, the sidewalk repair program, the street rehab program. Many of these are ongoing programs that the agency has historically been involved with. The third would be to promote economic development. We know one of the items that's been of interest to the city is to attract a hotel developer to the crossing. Another might be involving local business training in conjunction with Skyline College. A next would be a business attraction and retention program, with a focus of targeting new retail into the area. A fourth would be ongoing project area beautification, including commercial rehabilitation, improvements to the city's gateways and signage, and also continued support for the code enforcement program within the project area. As part of our development of the implementation plan, we also are analyzing potential tax increment generation that could occur over time. Currently, in the year two thousand nine-ten, we estimate that the agency will receive approximately four point six million of revenue. Now, that's after those pass-through payments have been made, and after the basic aid, school districts have received their share, and after the administration and operating expenses. So your revenue is on the upswing, and, you know, it's showing that there has been investment over the last ten years. What we did then was said, well, let's look at two scenarios, just for purposes more of illustrating what the potential growth may be. So the first scenario looked at a minimal growth and minimal new development, essentially a three percent growth of values over the next twenty-five years. And as you can see from the chart, those are the boxes shown in blue. The second scenario, we looked at those three catalytic opportunity sites that were identified in the specific plan, kind of looked at the performance that were done for those, and said, you know, there's an opportunity potentially, if these three moved ahead, for the addition of approximately two hundred million dollars in value. And we just, for, again, illustrative purposes, said, what if that came on over twelve years, beginning into years out? What would it look like then? And as you can see, what happens is, in the early years, the boxes are closer to the same size, and as the effects of new development occur over time, there's a multiplier effect in the, a level of tax increment that's generated. So we wanted just to present this for generic purposes, would require a lot more detail in terms of, is this going to be reality? So we just really wanted to introduce the concept. So we just really wanted to introduce the concept that new value equals a new tax increment in well into the future. Also related to that, we took those two streams of tax increment and said, what if we looked at potential bonds that could be secured by tax increment over the next 15 years? Again, just for illustrious purposes. And under the scenario one, again, the more conservative growth scenario, it's estimated that bond issues in excess of $44 million could occur over the next 15 to 20 years. Under the second scenario, that would increase to over $70 million. Now, the gross proceeds obviously will vary substantially because of the additional tax increment that's available to leverage into bonds. It's estimated that the first bond issue could be done possibly if the market were to improve in the year 2010-11. And that could potentially yield approximately $30 million in gross proceeds. The -- over time, the gap becomes closer to $27 million if redevelopment is successful and if that kind of new $200 million over 10 years can be realized into the future. The other mandated component of an implementation plan has to do with the redevelopment agency's affordable housing requirements. In this regard, it's our opinion thus far that you're meeting your mandates. We understand that there is the potential new project on San Mateo Avenue that's already been approved. It's like a lot of projects right now, it's getting -- it's hard to get financing. But we suspect, as the market turns around, that project can move forward. Other potential new affordable programs would be potential rental subsidy programs, residential rehab programs, identifying opportunity sites in the downtown and transit corridors area for affordable housing. And then ultimately, to develop a long-term affordable housing production strategy that makes use of that 20% set aside to produce housing that meets all market levels in the In summary, the five-year implementation plan for council consideration in January, as we intend, will identify flexible programs to be implemented over time, but it will list specific example projects. And also, it will demonstrate that the redevelopment agency will meet its affordable housing compliance requirements, and will also begin the specific plan implementation strategy as it overlaps and relates with redevelopment. Next steps will be to adopt the implementation plan in January, based on any recommendations coming from the community and the council. Again, starting that process of developing a strategy for redevelopment. Also, next steps would be to work with the council and the community to identify top needs and goals for the project area. Then specifically prioritizing projects and programs across short term and long term, looking not just at five years, but 10 years and 20 years out. And lastly, next steps would be future meetings held to decide specifically how money should be spent over the next five years, 10 years, and 20 years. That concludes my presentation. We're available to answer any questions you may have, and certainly to consider any input that the council has at this point in time. Thank you.
I've got a quick question. Given the state of the state, and they're talking about rating funds, what happens with all of these time limits? And do they get extended? I mean, do we get the benefit in some way, shape, or form of getting an opportunity to make this money back in extended time?
I would think no, just a simple answer. Well, historically, when the state has taken redevelopment funds in the past, they have done one-year, two-year extensions on some of those timeframes. The current legislation, which was adopted with regards to the fiscal year we're currently in, does not include one of those provisions. And as I'm sure you're well aware, the California Redevelopment Association has, again, filed lawsuit against the state, as we did last year, to challenge the state's legal standing in taking those funds.
Counselwoman O'Connell.
Thank you. First of all, with the eminent domain, it ends in 2019. Is that -- am I doing --
Actually, 2011.
I'm sorry, 2011. And you said it can be extended. How long can it be extended? And how much lead time before that do you need to start working on an extension for that? And for that, and also for the incurring the debt?
The eminent domain extension can be done for an additional 12 years, as much as 12 years. And it's actually somewhat of a simple form amendment, although it does require the certain documentation of existing conditions and substantiation of the need for continuing that authority. Generally speaking, I would say an eminent domain extension could be done within six months timeframe. And, you know, so you'd want to start that process within probably six to eight months prior to your expiration date. With regards to incurring debt, it's a little bit of a longer process. And I would say you may want as much as a yearly time for that type of amendment.
Okay. And then for that amendment, you said the eminent domain could be extended for as much as 12 years, and the other one could be extended for how long?
The duration of the plan. So you could take it out to 2030.
Oh, okay. And, okay, thank you.
Ms. Ibarra.
I'd like to say I'm very proud to be sitting here and having ten years of redevelopment and colleagues. I think it's a good time. And with your experience, working with redevelopment agencies, I'd like you to comment on how, you know, I'd like to think that we're well positioned, especially even with what's going on in the economy. We have specific plans. We are positioning ourselves. We know what we want, and plus, we've got, you know, we're anticipating a healthy stream of funds, redevelopment funds, coming in. So if you can comment on that, as far as, you know, with your experience, how does San Bruno look, you know, in this next implementation plan?
As they say, in bad economic times, it's time to have everything shelf-ready. And I think the timing of your specific plan is very good, that you're, you know, completing that process and that you're focusing on opportunity sites. I mean, that's key. It's always hard, when you have 700 acres, to work with, where do you start? And having gone through, you know, a rational process to focus on particular opportunity sites for a number of different reasons makes a lot of sense. And so, you know, I think you are well-positioned. And because you do not currently have any outstanding bonds that are a pledge of tax increment, a direct pledge of tax increment, you are in a position to potentially consider a bond issue at the appropriate time, both when, you know, the market is in good stead and when you've identified where you would spend that money. I think it's important to do it at the time when you know why you're getting it and where it's going to go.
Plus, we've got this big train thing going on.
Yeah. You've got places to spend it.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. We look forward to seeing you in January.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item is adjournment. Before we do, I would like to ask the council to join me in a moment of silence. We had a very, very tragic situation in Washington State. It happened just a week ago. Four officers were shot and killed on November 29th in Lakewood, Washington. They were Ronald Owens, Tina Griswold, Greg Richards, and Sergeant Mark Renninger. And it's just a very tragic situation. I'd like the council to join me in a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you very much. The redevelopment agency will meet next time at a time to be determined and announced in accordance with the statute. We will have a council meeting on the 15th, actually, to -- the only item is to interview potential applicants for the filling of the position that is vacant on the city council. And I would like to, on behalf of the entire council, if I may, wish everyone in San Bruno a Merry Christmas and have a very, very safe holiday. This meeting is adjourned.